It's our staff meeting, August 27th, 2024. And before we get started, let's have everybody introduce themselves on the dais.
Kristy Rochell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sumrods Dumas, Commissioner.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
James Sayer, Legal Counsel.
Thank you. And also, we need to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Reese from the meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumrods Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are starting our budget presentations today. We are very excited to be starting the budget process. And so, we've got a couple special guests with us to go into that. And Jeff will give us an overview of the process. But before we get to that, we've got an item related to the Quick Response Teams. We've got a presentation, and so, we're going to do that first. This is Megan Guthrie, who is the Director of the Office of Addiction Response, and Commander Tom Fallon. And I think, we're looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and everyone else. I'm Tom Fallon, and thank you for having me and my colleague Megan Guthrie here today to provide an update on the Hamilton County Quick Response Team. In my 35 years as a dedicated law enforcement officer in Ohio, I've had the privilege of leading the charge on this battle of addiction. For the past nine-plus years, I've served as the Commander of the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force and Quick Response Team. In the early 2010s, our community faced an alarming surge in overdose deaths, doubling from 2012 to 2015. This crisis prompted the establishment of the Heroin Task Force. I was entrusted by the Hamilton County Association of Chiefs of Police to lead this charge. Passed with investigating overdose deaths back to the supplier, we sought to hold drug dealers accountable for the devastating loss of lives within our community. To date, our investigators have looked into over 1,800 overdose deaths. This response was comprehensive. It included a implementation of a countywide law enforcement protocol. This would involve mandatory police response to overdoses and reporting of overdoses to the Greater Cincinnati Fusion Center, who was the repository of all police data. Megan and I have had the honor of running the Hamilton County Quick Response Team as an initiative where law enforcement officers collaborate with trained navigators to provide non-arrest, community-based pathways to care. These services address not only substance use, but also encompass mental health, homelessness, and other needs-based support. The Influx in carfentanil in 2017 introduced an additional layer of complexity, resulting first responder burnout and compassion fatigue. Faced with 570 overdose deaths in Hamilton County that year, we embarked on an all-hands-on-deck approach, acknowledging the pressing need for an innovative approach to community-based policing. In 2017, Commissioner Dreehouse asked me to build a countywide program. As a result, Hamilton County sought and secured federal grant funding. This was a pivotal move that facilitated the inception of our groundbreaking Quick Response Team. Rooted in the guiding principle of "How can we help you?", simply our mission, the program launched in 2018 as a part-time post-overdose response initiative. Initially receiving our referrals from the law enforcement through the Greater Cincinnati Fusion Center, our referrals have expanded to include Cincinnati Fire, the hospitals, the Justice Center, and the Hamilton County Public Health. Through collaborative efforts with contracted law enforcement and behavioral health partners, our dedicated team conducted door-to-door outreach, forming crucial connections with individuals in need and essential treatment services. Three to five days post-response, our team makes a minimum of three in-person visits, attempts actually, tirelessly working to link individuals to the care they need. Since our launch in 2018, the QRT has received over 10,860 inbound referrals for 6,620 unique individuals. I'm delighted to share that our collective efforts have yielded a 31% reduction in overdose deaths from 2017 to 2023, a testament to the efficacy of our comprehensive, community-based response. And if our turns continue, we're on track for double-digit decrease this year. I'll turn it over to Megan to talk about how we evolved and some of our current projects.
All right. Good afternoon. The launch of our Quick Response Team brought to light a lot of different challenges that our community faced, encountering the same individuals over and over in the throes of multiple overdoses, and struggling to locate those in need due to the transient nature of their population. So, to overcome this, we introduced a criminal analyst with the Greater Cincinnati Fusion Center who conducted comprehensive workups utilizing next-of kin information, phone records, social media, alternate addresses, to enhance the success of those connections. So, recognizing that pressing need for immediate access to care, the QRT collaborated with the Coalition to address a critical gap in our continuum of care. This led to the establishment of the Engagement Center, a 20-bed, 24/7 triage unit dedicated to individuals grappling with addiction. Focused on engagement with treatment services and discharge planning, the Engagement Center plays a pivotal role in ensuring that long-term success in recovery. In 2020, a stark reality unfolded in Hamilton County, particularly Walnut Hills 45206, when we recorded a distressing 35% increase in the death rate for Black residents, and the highest in the state of Ohio. From 2015 to 2022, Hamilton County experienced a profound impact of the number of African-Americans dying from overdoses by nearly 119%, rising from 63 individuals in 2015 to 138 in 2022. So, acknowledging the urgency of this situation, the QRT strategically partnered with Ohio State Patrol and UMDOP of Greater Cincinnati to intensify our efforts. This specialized task force launched in September of 2021, deploying a full-time law enforcement officer and trained peer navigator for proactive and reactive outreach in our community. To date, this initiative has provided vital support, education, and access to nearly 1,800 unique individuals, African-American individuals in Hamilton County. The QRT has actively fostered this partnership with partners like our African-American Engagement Work Group, who ensures voices from the community are heard, their perspectives are considered in all initiatives. This is an inclusive and participatory approach where that plays a crucial role in making sure that we're fostering positive relationships between law enforcement and the African-American community. So, as Tom mentioned, our journey commenced in 2017 with part-time post-overdose response programming, primarily reactive in nature, as we're visiting those individuals after they've already overdosed. So, recognizing the need to have a more proactive approach, through hotspot data, we transitioned to a full-time program to provide that proactive response. We brought our navigators in-house and then expanded to have two full-time teams by 2020, having both our African-American outreach program and a hotspot-specific team. Our hotspot-specific team is called HOP, Holistic Outreach for Priority People. It launched in the Price Hill community, and our initiative targeted 10% reduction in overdoses. If we could reduce overdoses by 10% in that Price Hill neighborhood, we would see that translate to 10% overall for the county. So, through a detailed data analysis and a block-by-block approach, we identified 13 high utilizers for calls for service that were responsible for over 25% of the calls for service in that neighborhood. So, managing a substantial caseload, our team delivers long-term intensive case management to those individuals. And over the past two-and-a-half years, that program has served over 100 individuals, resulting in impressive 70% decrease in documented overdoses for those individuals, and translating to a cost savings of over $120,000 in overdose runs alone. So, looking ahead to 2025, we are excited and determined to capitalize on the invaluable role that peers or individuals that lived experience play in our various outreach programs, and continue to hope to expand and strengthen our partnerships with Hamilton County Public Health and our Safe Services Program, as well as the courts, with Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, and Drug Court, to continue to amplify peer support services and to address social determinants of health in our community. This work would not be possible without the partnership between the Association of Police Chiefs and the Board of County Commissioners and the amazing staff that we have in the community every day. And so, just want to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to share this. And just, our QRT's comprehensive approach really underscores the need for holistic community care for individuals that are facing really complex needs in our community, all while fostering those improvements for police-community relations, serving as a model for the rest. And so, thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation to both of you. You know, the QRT is such a point of pride for us, those of us in Hamilton County, and truly all of us in Hamilton County, that have been working to reduce overdose deaths and try to get people into treatment and long-term recovery. And so, the Quick Response Team originating in Corrine Township, and now spread throughout not only Hamilton County, but really other parts of the country, is, it's for a reason, right? It's a model that works, and we're really touching lives and saving a lot of people who are in the throes of addiction. So, it only works because the team is so good. And so, thank you both for all that you are doing. As I said, it's a point of pride that we talk about, but really, it's the boots on the ground that are creating those kinds of results and cultivating those relationships. So, we're very, very grateful for all that you are doing and have done. So, Commissioner Dumas, any questions?
No questions. I'd just like to comment, I remember being at the press conference for the expansion of the QRT team, and it was just, we knew at that time that it was going to be impactful and that it would be phenomenal results, and so, you've proven us to be right. And thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse, for your vision to make this happen. Where would we be without it?
Well, and to be fair, Greg Hartman started it, but I then inherited it on the chair of the Quick Response, or the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, very proud of the work, and thank you for your support of the work that we do.
Absolutely.
All right, Tom, so we got one more thing. I don't know if people can see it, but we, many people have entered the room. So, we've got one last order of business before we let you go. So, again, very, very grateful for your leadership in this role. You have been so dedicated to the work that the HCARC has done and the Heroin Task Force has done. And so, many of the partners are in the room, a lot of QRT members are in the room. So, we've got a little something. So, we've got a proclamation honoring Tom, and this is, we're going to read through this proclamation before we get to the final part. So, I will start. Whereas Tom Fallon, Captain of the Amberly Village Police Department, has dedicated his career to law enforcement since 1989, beginning at the Wilmington, Wilmington, Ohio Police Department, and later serving in the Norwood Police Department and the Amberly Village Police Department.
And whereas Commander Fallon is a founding member of the Commander of the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force since its inception in June 2015, leading the task force in investigating over 1,800 opiate-related overdose deaths. And whereas, under Commissioner, under Commander Fallon's leadership, the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force was recognized with the Ohio Distinguished Law Enforcement Group Achievement Award by the Ohio Attorney General, Mike DeWine, on October the 5th, 2016, and named Ohio Task Force of the Year by the Ohio Narco in September 2019.
And whereas, in his role with the task force, Commander Fallon initiated the Quick Response Team in Norwood, Ohio in 2016, and launched the countywide QRT in 2018, which has provided critical support to over 6,000 Hamilton County residents since its inception. And whereas Commander Fallon has presented at prestigious events, such as the Congressional House Caucus for Addiction Treatment and Recovery, the White House National Office of Drug Control Policy, the National Governors Association, the International Association of Chiefs of Police Annual Conference, and the First Annual Police Treatment and Community Collaborative National Conference, among many other national, state, and local presentations.
And whereas, he has served on the Legislative Chair of the Ohio Task Force Commanders Association, and is a member of the Executive Board, authored numerous successful grant proposals, including federal and state awards, and serves as a peer reviewer for the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. And whereas Commander Fallon's unwavering dedication, leadership, and contributions have significantly impacted the fight against opioid, addiction, and overdose deaths in Hamilton County and beyond.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we celebrate and honor Tom Fallon for his exemplary career, his commitment to public safety, and his tireless efforts in leading the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force and the Quick Response Team. We extend our deepest gratitude for his service to investing in the betterment of Hamilton County, and wish him all the best in his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August 27th, 2024, to be known as Tom Fallon Day in all of Hamilton County. So, Tom is turning away from the microphone. But, Tom, if you would like to say a couple of words, I know you've already presented to us, but this is the reason for the season, so if you want to say anything.
Well, I kind of, I don't know, but I kind of had a inkling something was going on, but, and everybody lied to me, Mike, you're number one. Thank you, everyone. I mean, this is a celebration of success in Hamilton County. We've been really, really lucky to forge partnerships and have friendships and make a difference and save lives, and I'm just proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Well, the people in the room are a testament to the partnership, so thank you so much for what you've done. And thank you all for being here to help us celebrate. We're going to take a photo.
You and Jay want to get Anjanette and Jay?
Can everybody come up and file in so we can get a photo?
Just do my family. If you guys want to file in back there. QRT, if you guys want to file back. Bye, Abby.
Okay. Okay. Everybody turn sideways and scoot in.
If you can't see me, I can't see you.
Lay your bodies sideways.
Can you step out just a little bit? Yeah. Yep. And then, the gentleman in the very back with the hat on, can you step between the, a little bit more to the left? A little bit more? Yeah. And then, you beside him, can you step out a little bit? Thank you. And then you, can you scoot in just a teeny-tude bit? Thank you. Back over here, can I have you with the dark hair and the glasses come over to the side? Yeah. Yeah, you.
I need it.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, can I have, you in the very back, you stand between those two? Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're going to try this. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, okay. I think we got it.
We have business. Oh, really? All right. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations, Tom. All right. Let's move on to our second item. Judge Winkler, I think you're doing two items today. So, we've got the Guardianship Gap Pilot Program, is that you? All right, and this is unrelated to the budget? Is that right? Okay.
Thanks for giving us around 10 or 15 minutes to talk about the guardianship programs in probate court. I'm Judge Ralph Winkler. I am the Hamilton County Probate Judge. I like to say I've been a judge since the turn of the century, because I started as a judge back in 1999. Oftentimes, when you think about guardianships, if you're not familiar with it, you think of like a guardian angel. And then, I love the movies, the Guardians of the Galaxy, they take care of the whole galaxy. I'm not able to do that. I'm also not a guardian angel, but I'm just kind of kicking off this presentation today on the Hamilton County Guardianship Collaborative. Guardianship cases are one of the biggest concerns I have as a probate judge. We deal with the most vulnerable people in our county, and right now, we're underserving them. Guardianship is a relationship where one person has a legal authority and duty to care for another person due to the other person's incapacity or disability. A guardian may be appointed by the probate court for an incompetent adult. An incompetent person is someone who is so mentally impaired as a result of mental illness or physical illness or disability that they can't take care of managing their own lives. The person who is incapacitated or disabled and placed under a guardianship is called a ward. Applications for guardianships must be filed with the probate court of the county in which the ward resides. The probate court's initial duty in these cases is to hold a hearing to determine if guardianship is necessary, and then find whether the guardian is suitable for that person, and make sure the guardian understands their duties as the guardian. But the probate court's role does not stop with the appointment of a guardian. The probate court continues to serve as what's called a superior guardian. As a superior guardian, the court exercises supervisory authority over guardians through various requirements and legal procedures that include training, a reporting process, investigations, and sometimes guardians' removal if they're unsuitable. There are many due process requirements that apply, so we can protect our wards throughout this process. If you know someone dealing with a parent with advanced dementia, or an adult child with a severe disability, you may know someone who is a guardian. A guardian's duties include making critical decisions for the ward, including medical decisions, financial decisions, and decisions on where the ward can live, or marry, or even socialize. And sometimes, the guardian has a very tough duty of making an end-of-life decision for the ward. Unfortunately, not everyone has a family member or a friend who will step in as a guardian. This new Guardianship Collaborative is designed to address the overwhelming need for guardians for some of Hamilton County's most vulnerable adults, those who don't have family or friends. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Probate Court Magistrate Karen Rosen, who has been the leader in identifying the guardianship gap in Hamilton County, and she is spearheading the efforts to tackle this growing problem. And just to let you know, we currently have over 4,100 guardianships that are active, people that we're watching over to make sure their lives go as well as possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Rosen, and I've been a magistrate with the Hamilton County Probate Court for 16 years. And in that time, I have seen the need for guardianships and for guardians vastly increase, and the pool of qualified, suitable guardians greatly diminish. I spoke with my fellow magistrates. We were trying to come up with a layman's term that would really describe what a guardianship is. There wasn't anything we really felt perfectly gave the essence of what it is, but we liked in loco parentis, which means in the place of a parent, or performing the function of a parent, which is probably about as close as you're going to get. It's someone who steps in and tries to make decisions for the best interest of someone who is no longer able to do it for themselves. And on a more personal note, a few years ago, my mother was diagnosed with dementia. And since then, I've had to handle all of her medical appointments, make medical decisions, financial decisions. I was the one that had to make the decision when it was time for her to move to assisted living, because she was no longer able to live independently anymore. And my mom, several times, has said that there's been a role reversal, that now I'm more like the parent and that she is the child. And she thanks me all the time for being there to be able to help her. But there's many people in our community who don't have that. They don't have a parent, or a spouse, or a child, or a good friend who's willing to step in when the need arises. And the need might be something sudden, like a traumatic brain injury, or something like my mom with just aging, or something medical, like a stroke or a heart attack. We've had cases that involved alcohol-related dementia, overdoses, mental illness, intellectual disability, and the list goes on. My mom had the foresight of executing a healthcare power of attorney, but most people don't think ahead like that. And with the new HIPAA laws and regulations, if you haven't signed a healthcare power of attorney, or some type of medical release prior to becoming incapacitated, there's really no one that has the right to request your medical records or consent to medical treatment. That's how we wind up getting a lot of emergency guardianship calls from hospitals, because someone needs surgery and there's no one that can sign off for it. I've received phone calls over the years from developmental disabilities, and from hospitals, and from private citizens, and they're all asking the court to give them a name off of our list for, of guardians that can be appointed for someone that they know in the community, or a hospital that has someone that's going to be released to the community that can't care for themselves anymore. And I have to tell them, probate court doesn't have any kind of list like that. In fact, right now, there is, I know of no attorney, no agency that cares to Hamilton County that will provide a guardian for someone in the community. If you are in a residential facility and you don't have any type of behavioral issues, there's someone we might be able to, you know, agencies we can refer you to. But no one wants the liability of someone who's out in the community. There was CAS, Cincinnati Area Senior Services, who was able to provide some guardians, but several years ago, they had their funding pooled by United Way, and really, no one has filled that deficit. It kind of came to a head a couple of years ago, when, after guardianship hearing, someone, a social worker from the Adult Protective Services, who had testified, stayed after, and asked to speak to me, and told me what a hard time that they had doing their job, because there was no one, they couldn't find any guardians who would take on their cases. And after that, I just started thinking, if you can help someone, you should. And I can't just sit and wait for someone else to step in and try to fix this. And it's not like it was just somebody else's problem. It's a problem for the probate court also, this lack of guardians, in that, as the judge mentioned, if a guardian has to be removed for cause, or has health issues, and has, or it has to resign, or many times, they'll pass away. If there is no one to fill in, the probate court... If there is no one to fill in, the probate court, by statute, has to step in as superior guardian. Then we're the ones that have to make the medical decisions. We have to sign off on the case plans. We have to, maybe have to decide where this person's going to live. And I've had cases where this has gone on for a very lengthy period of time, because there's no one to step in to take over the guardianship, to fill this void. And the statute was meant for us, maybe if a guardian was temporarily unavailable, that we would step in. But we weren't meant to be acting as guardians for long periods of time. So, after speaking with Judge Winkler and getting the green light, I called and spoke with the legal counsel for the Guardianship Board in Franklin County in Columbus. I also spoke with members of the Guardianship Board from Delaware County, which is a smaller guardianship board. Then I just started emailing everyone, all the agencies that had sought the probate court for help. We started emailing, we started having Zoom meetings, brainstorming what we could do, how we could fix things in Hamilton County without reinventing the wheel. We talked about maybe trying to get funding so that we could, for Meals on Wheels, which took over for Cincinnati Area Senior Services, and maybe if they could get funding back and maybe expand enough so that they could meet everyone's needs. I spoke with the VA, I spoke with the Mental Health Board, I spoke with the attorney for the Tri-Health Hospitals, who was absolutely thrilled that someone was finally addressing this issue, because it's been such a problem for the hospitals. And they said that, they knew the hospitals would be very supportive. It was after that that I contacted the administrator's office. And once we had support from the administrator, I knew that maybe we were actually going to be able to do something. And at this point, you know, it's been a really long process, but I feel like we're in the home stretch of accomplishing something that could be really good for our community. So I want to thank you so much for listening to us today.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry.
Just wondering about the court system and how they understand your... I thought you were... What happened? You changed.
Were we not finished with the presentation?
No, we were not finished with the presentation.
For Christ's sake.
Okay, go on.
Sorry. What we were getting to is a collaborative effort and approach towards dealing with this guardianship issue, because it touches on so many of our social services at the county, which is why you will see, it's not just probate court here and the administration. There's representatives from Mental Health and Recovery Services, Council on Aging, JFS, who sees this, I won't say every day, but a lot, through Adult Protective Services, as well as Developmental Disabilities Services. We had several narratives in the interest of time. If I can just go ahead and read them, but to give you some examples of the individuals that aren't getting their needs met through the guardianship programs, if that's okay.
I would like to ask a question.
Yes, yes.
It's going to go, but just wondering how the court is taking the lead on this. I see all the partners. There's definitely something that needs to happen. But that's just a question in my mind, how's the court taking the lead? You don't have to answer that now, maybe as you present, we'll get more on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Absolutely. So one example would be a 56-year-old with primary diagnosis of schizoaffective disorder, bipolar type, and substance use disorder. Judgment and insight are impaired, memory impaired, unable to manage finances and take care of basic needs. The individual with a history of incarceration, multiple state hospital admissions, a guardian would be able to assist them with medical follow-up, monitoring of their basic needs, and possible nursing home placement for memory care services. An 88-year-old bed-bound individual who lives with their son, due to the son's mental health issues, he could no longer provide appropriate care for his aging father. Protective orders were put in place until a guardianship hearing could take place later this month. That's an active situation. Another example would be an 83-year-old who's lived in her home her entire life. Her husband and son passed away several years ago, no other living family members, advanced dementia. She was hospitalized from a fall that fractured her back. She has a friend who works full-time as her power of attorney, but she's completely, her friend is now completely overwhelmed with the responsibilities of caring for her, and unable to be a guardian. Another would be an individual with mild intellectual disabilities, who's relatively high-functioning, but the individual is able to reside alone with limited assistance from his mother. But the mother becomes ill or passes away, again, there's no other family member to provide that assistance for them. Another example, I only have two more left. A 38-year-old male who previously lived at home with his family. Severe intellectual disability, limited verbal communication, no safety awareness, and requires continuous supervision. He was discovered to be experiencing physical abuse from a family caregiver, removed from the home into an alternative living arrangement for safety, but there are no family members suitable to be a guardian for him due to the abuse issues. Area hospitals request the court-appointed guardians for an individual who's ready to be discharged, similar to the magistrates just mentioning that, but who they believe is not fully capable at that time of caring for himself in the community, or to make decisions for himself. The individual has no friends or family available, or willing to be their guardian. Nursing homes often will not take patients from the hospital without a guardian, or guardianship pending because of the legal issues with that, as we mentioned, for their medical care. So how we got to this point, as magistrate and the judge mentioned, probate court identified the need in this community, I think this addresses some of what you were getting at, Commissioner Demas. We formed a collaborative between all of these agencies, the administration and the courts, to discuss how to handle this issue. We looked at what's been done throughout Ohio and some of the other divisions. Some have, some counties actually have created mini-agencies to run these out of their county with staffing, and extreme costs, to be quite honest. The guardianship team has been meeting since 2013 to discuss policies, procedures, and funding needs, with a goal of figuring out how we can pool our resources to capture these individuals that are falling through the cracks now in the community, and provide guardians to them. This is an example of all of the agencies that are partnering together on this approach. As far as the next steps and the wrap-up of this for the commissioners, and what we're looking for guidance on at this point, the Guardianship Collaborative has been working with the prosecutor's office to establish a memorandum of understanding for all of the organizations in setting up this collaborative approach to dealing with guardianship. The idea is to pool resources from each agency, we estimate that to be about $50,000 per the levies here, together for an initial seed money approach to initiate an RFP, and partner with a local social services agency to provide guardians for those indigent individuals that aren't otherwise able to have a guardian for them, for care. And then look at initiating that in early 2025, and report back to the commissioners. And about a year from then, look to see if this is something we can continue to develop, if we have enough funding, if we need to expand it, and next steps for that program. Now we're done.
Now we're finished. So I have a quick question. So in the past, we've had guardians, I recognize that there aren't enough guardians. But how has it worked in the past? Have they been volunteers? Have they run through a certain organization? And how have the guardians functioned?
Good afternoon. Previously, there were several attorneys in our community that were savvy enough to understand that there is a possible financial gain from doing this as a job, a service. They had direct connections with nursing homes, and they had a few guardians working for them. Sadly, those attorneys have begun to either retire, one passed away, another one is getting ready to age out of being an attorney. So we've lost that ability or that service here in Hamilton County. As the judge mentioned, there are over 4,000 active guardianships in this county, and that number continues to rise. And I'll talk about that in our budget presentation in a few minutes. But there is just no one available for these individuals. So when that dried up, when the attorneys began, you know, to leave practice, there was no more individuals that were willing to step up and do this. As you probably are aware, these individuals are dealing with some of the most difficult things in life for individuals as they become older. I mean, they're making decisions if they can have medical procedures, or what their financial situation is, or where they can live. And they have to be available 24/7 for a nursing home, or if they live in their residence. If they have an issue, they need to be available to them 24/7, and a lot of people don't want to take on that responsibility. That's why we're here today in a collaboration between, I mean, you saw the individuals that were there in that slide. I would say that's probably unprecedented for the amount of agencies that are approaching you today. One, with a problem that is in our community that needs to be addressed. Two, that they are offering seed money to start a collaborative together. I don't know, if you wouldn't mind, maybe could I just speak to what other counties are doing for a minute? I was going to speak to that, and I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I've spoken to, not every other probate court, but most of them in the state of Ohio, small or large. And they are struggling with finding qualified guardians to serve vulnerable individuals in their community. How are other communities in Ohio dealing with this issue that we are calling the guardianship gap? The Franklin County Probate Court approached the legislature in 2014 and asked for the ability to create a board that would oversee all indigent wards in need of a guardianship in their county. In 2017, the legislature passed a law under Revised Code 210126, which allowed for the creation of a guardianship services board. The creation of the first board actually happened in 2021 in Franklin County. Now nine other counties in the state of Ohio have created guardianship services board. What is a guardianship services board? It's an agency that is created with three board members. One appointed by Judge Winkler, one will be appointed by DDSB, and one would be appointed by Mental Health Recovery Services Board. The board then hires a director, social workers, paralegals, attorneys, and other employees it requires to manage the agency. Funding comes from the agencies, levies, county commissioners, some from the court, and possibly hospitals. Currently, as I said, 10 counties have guardianship services board in the state of Ohio. The Franklin County Guardianship Services Board has 35 employees, with a budget of over $3.3 million. Employee costs are 92% of that total expense budget. I'm providing these facts because I would like to highlight that we are taking a different approach. We are here today to ask for your approval to pilot a program similar to a GSB, but without creating another agency. None of the agencies before you today believe another agency is necessary. We believe we can address the guardianship gap more cost-effectively, more rapidly, and still deliver outstanding service if we create a collaborative that oversees a guardianship provider. I would like to draw your attention to the number of agencies presenting to you today, and the fact that we all see this as a common problem and the best solution for our community. This is an impressive number of agencies coming together in this collaborative. Everyone in this room is pledging funds, resources, and is a show of good faith in our belief in this collaborative program. That's what we believe is best for our community. We don't think we need to have another agency. Do you have any additional questions?
It's very helpful. Thank you for the explanation. Yeah, no, I'm all about collaboratives. I mean, I always feel as though that's the best way to approach problems. I was just trying to get my arms around where we've been and why. And I understand the expanding population of folks that may need the services of a guardian. So just trying to get a better understanding of, you know, what we've done in the past. Commissioner Demas, any questions or comments?
Well, really, that's my question. There are currently over 4,000 open and active guardianship cases. So I'm looking at the collaborative and the partnership and how they deal with guardianship. What are we doing right now to deal with? I would imagine JFS and Council on Aging, you, where are the 4,000 coming? Where are you getting the 4,000 number from?
Those are open, those are total cases that are open and active in Hamilton County. About 2/3 of those are indigent cases.
Okay, very good. So how are you guys, can I ask the partners, how are you dealing with guardianship issues now? Thank you for your presentation.
Well, most individuals have a family member who can step in and be their guardian. But we do run into these cases periodically where we need to have a professional guardian, because there's nobody that can do that, which is what we're trying to do here. Previously, that gap was kind of strung together from our perspective with United Way funding, and Cincinnati Area Senior Services had a few paid guardians. But unfortunately, that program has shrunk, and the need has grown.
Yeah, I heard that at the beginning about United Way. So as you look at your, for instance, your contract on what services you provide, is part of your contract for COA guardianship assistance, is that part of your contract?
We, yeah, we've not paid for guardianship care in the past. That's not something that we've paid for.
What about job and family services? I know you deal with adults, if I may, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for having us here. So we typically get involved through our 421 Life, Adult Protective Services Program, so individuals over 60. We have staff who take those calls through our hotline, same hotline that we use for 241 Kids. They call for allegations of abuse or neglect, mistreatment, exploitation of adults. We typically work with the courts and the families to try to find a guardian for individuals who we identify and bring into our caseload. But the gaps still exist, and that's the reason why we are here to support this collaborative, to make sure that we have a system in place and a process in place that can help us more readily identify appropriate guardians for the adults that come into our organization through 421 Life.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
That's a, I mean, it's great that partners are willing to contribute. I'm just, you were saying, so we said we had so many speakers, it would go, it would go to staff, staffing, for, yes, ma'am. You want to come to?
Do you have to come to the mic?
Yeah. I don't even know how to describe this. The amount of guardians we have for, and I should say this, individuals that are in care, which are the majority of them, has shrunk. But I just want to emphasize a very real need for guardians, trained guardians, and these are going to be social workers, most likely, for individuals who are in the community. We have, and we have never had anyone to do that, and it's a really large void. We're talking about, you know, for many years, I did the civil commitment docket out of some behavioral health. And there were so many individuals that were in and out, like a revolving door. They would, they would come in, you know, they would be in the hospital for a couple of weeks, get their medication, go back out, stop taking their medication, possibly commit a crime, or something else would happen in the community, and then they'd wind up right back in. And if they had a guardian or someone out in the community who could do more for them than just greater Cincinnati behavioral health, if they had a guardian in the community, they might be someone that can make sure that they stay on their medications, and might be able to stay out of the hospital. We have so many cases where, and I know from, especially from DDS, where there's someone who, they might be not high-functioning enough to be on the community by themselves, where they, they just had some support. I've had so many cases where there's been individuals that they could be out there, they wouldn't have to leave their homes. But the only guardians we have right now will serve as people that are in nursing homes. So if someone applies to be guardian, they're going to take you out of your house, and they're going to put you in a nursing home. And it could happen, because that's where you have to be. But if we had this guardianship program, and one of the main focuses is going to be this piece of finally having guardians who will work with people in the communities, in their homes, then some of them could stay there. But I know, but I just wanted to point that out, only because I didn't want it to look like, like, yes, there's, there are some agencies, we, you know, that can be contacted, we have guardianships. I did three guardianships. agencies we, you know, that can be contacted. We have guardianships. I did three guardianships just today, and they were all with Compassionate Care Management, Inc., who provided independent guardians. But if there's someone in the community, or if there's someone who has, because a lot of them are volunteers, if someone has even in a care facility and they have a behavioral issue, no one wants to take it. And that's when, why we really need this program to fill all of those voids.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one last comment. Yeah, I, there's no doubt that there's a need. I have no question about that. I was just wondering about the best way to go about it. You were saying 2023, they started meeting and talking, and so it might be helpful for me just to have a comprehensive, maybe summary of how the program itself would work. And so I think about, and I'm gonna go, go back to the 50,000. If you're talking about hiring social workers, that takes, no?
We're talking about contracting with an agency, pulling together $50,000 from each of the agencies. Okay.
But still, it's not, I don't see it as being enough. So I'm not saying-
We don't, yeah, we don't know if it'll be enough. That's why it's a pilot.
Needs to put in more. I'm glad that they have agreed to put, because we know how funding is. But if I could just have maybe just a two or three-page summary of how the program itself would work, I would appreciate it. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just had one thing to add from DDS. We agree, have the same issues our partner agencies spoke to you about in terms of what we used to do versus why there's such a need now. Appsi of Ohio also used to take a lot of our cases when we refer for guardianship, and due to their lost funding, we can hardly get anyone in, even if it's a true emergency. So that's another reason that the DDS population growth, in addition to aging guardians, has really continued to increase. So we're currently, we always seek family, as everyone else spoke to, or, you know, friends, people like that, but those who don't have someone, we're seeing a lot of aging parents, a lot of aging family members. So people who might have otherwise had them, that's also contributing to the growth. So we do a limited contract, so we are using some of our funds to contract with private agencies that do guardianship. So we've shared those resources with the group, and we anticipate more than likely they would be bidders on an RFP if the group were to proceed and go that direction.
Yeah, that's, it's helpful. I mean, I think we lacked a little bit of clarity there, I think, in the beginning. So, so you are, to be clear, the collaboration is asking for the board commissioners to approve of?
We're just asking the board to approve of the approach for the program moving forward. The next step would be bringing forward an MOU, which we've been working with the prosecutor's office on drafting. I'd say it's about 90% together at this point, which would outline how all the partners will work together, how the resources will be pooled and then distributed in a pilot approach. We're not saying we're going to be able to take care of all of the individuals at this point that need guardianship, but it'll allow us to figure out what the actually network is, what the need is, and what that could potentially cost longer term, and then come back to the board once we've done an initial pilot with feedback on the results of that, what the costs are, if we're looking to increase, maybe decrease, the funding for it moving forward.
So Commissioner, do you need more information before we move forward with approval for the con, your-
Well, we'll be bringing the MOU forward in the next month. We just wanted to make you aware of the program and that it's coming forward.
So you don't need anything from us today?
No vote, no.
All right. Because, and I think in the meantime, it would be helpful to get the information-
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dumas asked for, so that we've got a more rounded-out vision. And I agree, you know, the partners, the amounts, and how expansive is the pilot, how many people are we trying to serve, you know, all those kinds of things-
Absolutely.
That we're going to want to know as we move towards an MOU. Okay. And thank you for bringing it to our attention. And thank you for everyone stepping up and saying, yeah, we're going to help try to solve the issue. So I really appreciate that to all those that are in the room.
Yes.
Okay, any other?
I was just, you just said what I was going to say. I appreciate the compassion and the concern that you guys are putting forth to make this happen.
We talk about a lot in the reviews of levies about collaboration and working together and trying to find solutions, and this is the most collaborative approach, I think, of social services agencies I've worked on.
Yeah, that's great.
Been great.
And the levies are a helpful source of funding perhaps for some of these things.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. All right. We are going to now launch into our budget presentations. So Administrator Ludo is going to give us an overview of this. These are the first of the presentations that we're going to have over the next couple of months to help us get a better idea of where we are with the budget and what the requests are and the rationale behind those requests, department to department. So Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this, as you indicated, Commissioner kicks off, this is really the time of year we kick off the budget process formally and publicly. For those watching at home, it's actually been going on much longer. It starts earlier on in the year when we start working with departments to put in budget requests. The board knows in August, early August, we do the tax budget. And around this time of year, we start meeting with departments to better understand the requests of departments. Just so folks, again, folks at home may have some idea, the board's, the county's general fund budget is around $390 million. All in, all of our funds together are over $1 billion. So we're talking about large amounts of taxpayer resources here that every year the Board of County Commissioners has to put into a framework of allocating those towards the public services, their responsibilities of the county. So this is everything from services of the sheriff, either patrol, or the operation of the Justice Center. This is the Board of Elections. This is operating the court system, the crime lab, 911 systems, economic development, all of these services annually, and including, we just talked about some of the levies as well in our all-funds budget, whether it's mental health, senior services, children's services, all of these services annually budgeted in the all-funds budget of the county. As we go through the departmental request process, the Budget Office ultimately gets to the point where they look at the projected revenues that we're going to have for next year relative to our anticipated or projected expenditures for that year. And that relates, everything relates to everything from known inflationary increases to departmental requests in terms of new program staffing, et cetera. So right now, as the Budget Office has received the initial requests from departments, we're looking at an imbalance of approximately $50 million in terms of the, what departments are stating they need versus the revenues that we are projecting that we will have. So the Budget Office, at this point, is in the process of, and will be in the process shortly, of beginning to work directly with departments to close that gap. We do this every year. Every year, there is a budget gap, and every year, we ultimately close that gap. It's just a question of the strategy that we have to employ to do so. So today is really the first day when we have departmental presentations to talk about the budget. We were fortunate enough to have Judge Winkler here already for his presentation on the guardian, guardianship gap. So we thought we would use this time to hear from Probate Court on their budget. We also have today the Public Defender's Office that will also present on their budget. So with that, Commissioner Drehouse, without further ado, I'll turn it back over to, I don't know, Scott or Mr. Weigel will take it from here on the Probate Court's budget.
Welcome.
I just saw you guys. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Scott Weigel. I'm the Court Administrator for Judge Winkler's Probate Court. I'd like to thank you for giving us an opportunity to present our budget to you. I will be as brief and direct as possible and encourage any questions you may have about the court, our trends, or our budget request. Simply on Slide 1, we're just showing you last year what we were approved for and our requested budget for this year, our difference of $195,000. Slide 2, I would like to break down a request by three specific areas: personnel costs, civil commitment and mental health costs, and operating and purchasing expenses. Our personnel costs, we are requesting an additional $149,839. $84,000 of that is in medical premiums, and that is a cost that is out of the court's control. I'm sure, as you know, this increase is applied to our budget due to the forecast by the Budget Office. We are requesting that the $50,000 that was inadvertently removed by the Budget Office from our 2024 salary line be restored, as we have discussed directly with our budget analyst. And then, of course, if you take those two into consideration, we believe we're really only asking for $15,000 to cover our 2025 salaries. In the mental health and civil commitment area, when someone is facing civil commitment, which is involuntary hospitalization for severe mental illness, you're entitled to a number of protections under the law, including a court-appointed attorney, an independent evaluation by a psychiatrist, all of which are required and expensive. The $45,749 additional we are requesting is strictly to cover the cost of attorneys and independent medical evaluations. As you will see in our next two slides, civil commitment has grown exponentially over the past five, few years. The court has a statutory duty to hear these cases and to protect the rights of those who come before us, as well as public safety, just as the county has a duty to properly fund the court, to carry out the significant responsibility to those vulnerable individuals in the public. And then last, of course, we are only asking for $400 in operating expenses. That's just our office supplies and mailing and so forth. Our purchasing lines have remained relatively flat for several years. What are the drivers of these increase, or the increase? First of all, as I mentioned, the rise in healthcare premiums, which is out of the court's control, what we believe is a correction of the $50,000 to put back in our salaries. As you probably are aware, employee costs are, you know, 85% of our current budget. We have experienced public service-oriented staff with 18 years of OPERS experience, and we continue to need, we continue to need to fairly competitively compensate employees to retain them. Our court employees range from 35-plus years of service down to one year service. The court doesn't have the turnover that other county departments have. The reason our employees stand is because we, how we treat them on a daily basis and how they are compensated for their work. Many improvements have occurred recently to bring new talent into the county workforce. The county's greatest asset is its employees. Please consider this when allocating salary increases this year. Even though we are able to retain our employees, we still need to remain competitive. We have a very special group of individuals working for the court that are highly trained and specialized in our legal area. Retaining this knowledge is vital. That being said, we believe we have some of the happiest county employees. We do this by providing a team approach, merit-based raises, and having a judge that is seen as our coworker. We truly believe the court is like a family. The statistics below, over the last five years, you will see that we have increased our total case filings by 10%, 39% increase in civil commitment and mental health cases, 21% increase in new guardianship cases. In those, 27% of those cases filed have increased because of indigent cases, and 7.5% increase in open guardianship cases. And then, of course, just the inflation of costing goods and services. This slide itself represents a total commitment filings from year 1991 through 2023. As you can see, the number of filings that occurred in 1991 was around 450, up to last year, which incurred over 1,300 cases. I can tell you right now, we are running at 110 cases more than we were at this point last year. You may ask or wonder why we believe mental cases are continuing to increase. We believe this jump in mental health cases is due to a multitude of factors, including gaps in the mental health care system, the reduction of mental health treatment facilities and beds available in local hospitals, the rise in drug abuse and addiction, the aftermath of COVID, and the division of mental ill, the diversion of mental ill individuals from the criminal justice system. That's why those cases are beginning to increase, and will continue to do that in the future. Guardianship case counts. This slide shows you the total new guardianship filings each year in blue. In the orange, it shows you the number of those cases that are filed that are indigent cases. And then the gray bar is the active and open cases per year in the Probate Court. These statistics are from 2006 through 2023. We believe these numbers will continue to increase as the baby boomers and Generation X become older, as obviously medicine continues to advance and individuals live longer. This slide represents how many total cases and actions were filed from 2013 through 2023. We will still continue to see increases in guardianship and mental health as we move forward, which is going to continuously increase the amount of cases we have actively per year. Some court facts. 75% of the individuals that come to the court are pro se, representing themselves. The court has offered a help desk for 21 years with no cost to the county. The court currently provides help for over 11,000 residents per year. The court has its own case management system and IT staff, which keeps us on the cutting edge of technology. As we've discussed in previous years, as case filings continue to increase, the complexity and time required for these cases also increases due to the fact that such a large volume of cases are filed and litigated by the general public, not attorneys. This requires extensive time and resources provided by the court. Pro se filers continue to increase annually. The court has offered a help desk to our customers, pro se litigants and attorneys for 21 years, similar to what other offices have started recently, but with no additional cost to the county. We help more than 11,000 residents and attorneys annually. Our clerks and magistrates are highly trained, have years of experience, and are helpful individuals with some of the toughest issues in their life, all while providing legal information but not legal advice, which the court is not allowed to do by law. As our case volume and pro se filers increase, the court's resources are, and the personnel are constantly stretched to the limit. Some things to note, the court has not requested a supplemental appropriation or exceeded the approved budget in over 21 years. The court expands a yearly average of half a million dollars from restricted funds to reduce the general fund request. The court has increased revenue to the general fund by 29% over the last five years. I have personally been involved in the court's budget for over 21 years, and we know how to right-size our budget. We request that we actually, we request what we actually need to operate, and we don't request supplemental appropriations year after year. We've had a great working relationship over the last 21 years with the Budget Department, county administration, and the commissioners, and we look forward to continuing that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thank you for, to the team members who are sitting here in the front row. Appreciate that. I just have a couple of questions. So when you talk about personnel costs making up the vast majority of your budget-
Yes.
Understood. We have seen a trend, and it's a good trend here in the county, where we have done some right-sizing by way of wages to make ourselves competitive. We did that as a county commission a couple of years ago because we were losing people like crazy, especially those that were well-trained, to neighboring counties in particular. And so we did a competitive wage study. We tried to figure out, some people were where they needed to be, others were not, and so tried to figure all of that out and then right-size. And it's an expensive proposition, but we did it. We needed to do it to stabilize the county. And so here we are. And then we have tried to do 3%-ish raises as we've gone to make sure that we are continuing to honor the work of our employees. So as it relates then to this, this part of the organization, I should say, did you, I may have asked you this last year-
Did.
I did a lot of asking this last year because I don't have a sense of how many of the departments went through that exercise, and then where that leaves you by way of competitive wages for your department, and what kind of wage increases then you've embarked upon as you've then moved forward. So could you help us better understand that?
Sure. I've been privy to the county's wage study. That wage study is not necessarily comparable to the court's, just because of the difficulty of our job and how it differs from a regular or general, just clerk, maybe in the recorder's office, the legal aspects. We have done our own wage comparison with other counties of our size, as well as our surrounding counties. We are completely competitive with them. I'm not afraid to lose an employee because of starting wages. I will be honest with you, we just hired two clerks, and we reviewed that process again at that time to make sure that we were competitive, not only against the surrounding counties, but the other courts in our county. So I know we are competitive to them. As I mentioned, we are a performance raise-based system. That system is based on a multitude of factors, just like any other department, but the judge and myself do not believe that a 3% COLA across the board to every employee is the right way. the right way to have employees want to step up and do more. I believe the Commissioners knew that this year when they provided the 1.5% bonus to some employees in the county. I think it's very important to compensate those individuals that are working harder, and that gives some incentive for the other individuals to step up and do more, too. As I mentioned, we have a very good family at our court. We take what we do very seriously every day, and we consider every action we take financially towards them is something that's very important to us. So we work within the amount of money and wages and salary increase the Commissioners give, but we make sure that we do that in the, in a performance-based manner.
Can you, what, so what kind of increases? Do you do that on an annual basis?
That's correct.
No?
No.
But what amount? Do you know, like an average?
Range?
Uh huh.
Well, if you would provide for us 3%, that range may be from 2% to 4%, depending on what is available to us in our current salary base and the raises you gave us. And each employee would be rated upon that, and they would given that range.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dunis, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. Under the healthcare premiums, we know they're going up. Do you make an assessment yourself? Are you part of our whole healthcare? When HR does their assessment, then you go with what we recommend?
We plug in what insurance individuals will receive, and that is plugged in by the Budget Office, through HR, through the Budget Office, that way.
If you do.
Yeah, we have nothing to do with that number.
So as far as turnover, you say how much staff love being there and your family and...
You do. You asked me this last year.
I believe you. Yeah. What am I getting ready to ask you?
Oh, I will tell you this. Several individuals, one of them in this room has a secretary that works for her daughter works for us. Mallory Gilio works for us. Dave Pittinger's daughter works for us. They come to us because we have a good place to work. And I would challenge anyone to come over and ask our employees if they don't believe that. And if we don't believe in them every day, then we don't support them in the right way.
Okay, so that's not related to my question.
No, go ahead. You weren't, no, you did ask me about that last year, and I was...
Okay. But I was gonna ask you about retirement.
Sure.
And turnover. Do you predict, or do you see any retirements in the near future that could impact your budget? I know that, go ahead.
Not that I'm aware of. As I mentioned before, we have some employees that have worked for us for 35-plus years. They have no intent of leaving. I think the workforce in general is working longer, and people continue to work for us and they wish to. Do I, I can't speak right now to any individuals looking to retire because no one has given me that indicator, but I know that that is considered part of our budgets every year. There's a percentage for turnover, it's considered. And I've argued that for the last several years, that I don't believe it's fair to do that to every department because our department, our employees don't leave. They like where we work, they like what we do, they like their boss. So they want to continue to work for the probate court and for the county and what we provide to our citizens every day. And I'm very proud of that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one additional question. So you said in, under things to note, that the court expands a yearly average of $500,000 from restricted funds. Is that included in the budget this year?
That we would expend $500,000?
Yeah.
To be honest with you, Commissioner, we'll probably expend more.
How much is in the fund?
Between, we have several. We have about $2 million between five or six special, project funds, you know, restricted funds in the court. We handle all of our computer replacements. We handle all of our IT cloud storage through that. We are about to undertake several hundred thousand dollar remodeling projects, just because we need to move the mental health department from one floor to another floor because they've expanded so much over the last five years that we can't use the space. It's too small for what we're doing now. So the court is going to take this on without asking for any capital money from the county. So we believe using our restricted funds to offset the general fund is very important to do. We've had a very good partnership with Jeff and with the Budget Office over the years, and you've provided funds when we needed them, but we've also provided our own funds to help. I don't know if, Jeff may have been around at the time, but I was involved with the original magnetometer purchase for our building. Our court paid for that. So we believe in using our restricted funds to benefit the general fund and the county at all times. It's just, we have to do that within the confines of the law. And it doesn't necessarily mean that I can just buy anything with that money. The restricted funds require us to do certain things.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Your first stop. We're in a good mood so far, so there you go. Appreciate it. All right. I know, all right. Second to go, we've got the Public Defenders Office, and there's a team, so I'm gonna let you all introduce yourselves.
Let me get myself organized here first. This right here, big pile of stuff. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I guess it's that time of the year again. So let me begin by giving a quick introduction. My name is Andy Lancer, and I'm the administrator of the Public Defenders Office. Joining me today is Sean Vicente. He's our Municipal Division Director, and together we're gonna kind of tag-team today's presentation. I know we have a limited amount of time, and I also know how much Sean likes to speak, so I told him we have to stick to 10 minutes or Ms. Herbie will get on us, so.
And Kathy Ancona, I'm sorry. I'm the deputy director of the county public.
No, no. Kathy's, Kathy's the top. All right, so before...
Last comment.
Yes.
Ray is out on a scheduled vacation. I'm sorry.
Yep. You're representing Ray Fowler.
The highlight of his year. Yeah, Ray Fowler. All right, so before I begin, I want to take a quick moment and thank each of you Commissioners for your continued support to indigent defense in Hamilton County. We are on track to represent over 26,000 adult clients this year and nearly 13,000 clients in our juvenile court system. Combined, we expect to represent over 39,000 clients this year alone. And providing legal representation to some of the most disadvantaged and economically insecure populations in our county is a monumental effort and one that takes resources. So I, on behalf of our commission, the public defender, the deputy public defender, and all of our management team and staff, would like to thank you for your strong support over the years. All right. See if I remember how to do this. All right. So to get right into it, because I know we're on a time crunch here. Did I have it upside down? Oh, geez. My office is requesting appropriations of $34.3 million for next year. If approved in its entirety, this amount will be $3.1 million increase next year over this year. And what are we requesting? We are requesting 22 new positions that we believe are necessary to continue our work providing indigent legal defense to our residents. Yes.
It will be an increase of $1.
$3.1 million over what was appropriated for 2024.
Thank you.
Yep. So again, we are requesting 22 new positions that we believe are necessary to continue our work providing indigent defense to our residents, a slight salary adjustment to keep pace with rising inflation and certain market realities, and improvements to our IT infrastructure. We are also a revenue generating department for the county. All of our personnel and office expenses are eligible to be reimbursed to the county through the Ohio Public Defender at the prevailing reimbursement rate. The current rate and the rate that's being projected for next year is 78%. So we forecast total revenue to the county to be in the neighborhood of $26.2 million for next year. Now for more specifics on what we are requesting position-wise, I'll start with our first priority, and that's finding Ray's successor. Ray is the current public defender, and he's set to retire at the expiration of his contract, which expires June 30th, 2026. We've started the recruiting process now for his successor. However, in doing so, our goal is to hire the most qualified applicant from a nationwide search. To ensure that we can do this, like I said, we had to start the process now. And the reason being is that per Ohio Revised Code, any candidate selected to serve as a county public defender in Ohio must be barred with the Ohio Supreme Court for one year prior to their selection. Given this requirement, and to ensure that all of our candidates, if selected, can assume the position of Hamilton County Public Defender on July 1st, 2026, we believe this... Now moving along, our second priority is our office expansion and relocation. We've requested this for several years now, and I just want to say thank you again for what you have permitted us to do this year. So we've moved forward with leasing the remaining space on the eighth floor at 125 East Court Street. We're in the process of finalizing that move today, as we speak. Furniture is being installed today. We hope to have the people who are going to be moving over there moved in there by the end of next week at the latest. With that said, we're still in dire need of a long-term solution to our space needs. And if you recall, our most recent evaluation by Mark Stevens, he recommended that we consolidate our offices into one location for practical operational reasons and out of a concern for our clients, who are asked to meet with their attorneys in the same building that the prosecutors reside in. To speak more about this, I'd like to ask Sean Vicente, our Municipal Director, to kind of fill in the gaps.
Thanks, Andy. Once again, Sean Vicente. I'm the Director of the Municipal Division. Our office needs to be under one roof for two reasons. One is to better serve clients. We consider ourselves more and more as sort of a law office for the people, for the people of Hamilton County. The vast majority of our clients are awaiting trial while living in the community. For them to come down and see us at the office presents a couple of problems. One, all of them have been taken in by law enforcement, right? So they're handcuffed. They were often put in jail or a cage for a few days before they were released. Well, to come see us now at our current office, the adult office, they have to pass through security. They often have to get patted down by some officers. It's rarely the same officers who arrested them, but still, it's sort of repeating that process. When they ride the elevator up to see me or one of my lawyers, they very much will run into an alleged victim who's there to meet with the prosecutor, or more likely, a prosecutor that's eventually gonna ask for them to go to jail. It's an awkward situation. Along with that, being in two different places creates it so that we cannot frankly collaborate that well. Our entire juvenile office, our youth defense division, is just across the street. Most of the adult division is over still on 230 East Ninth. A lot of what we do as lawyers day-to-day is very informal. I'm gonna walk down a hallway, I'm confused about a case. What do I do? How do I serve this client? What needs need to be met? What can I bring to the judge? Those things don't start and end with that individual client. They have families. They have kids maybe in the system. They have kids, maybe there's a guardian ad litem. For me to then, to simply walk down to a different floor is a lot easier than trying to arrange via email, the busy schedules to get with that person. The other issue we're having, and I'm really glad these pictures were put in here, and Commissioner Drehouse, I appreciate the time you spent in our office. A few months ago, we walked you around. We don't have a lot of space to even meet with our clients confidentially, in a confidential way. So the analogy I would give is, you go see your doctor about something personal. Well, anytime you have a conversation with doctors, personal. Well, imagine having to meet with your doctor in the lobby of their office, surrounded by other patients awaiting to see that same doctor or a different doctor. That's lost. And one of the things that we try to do for all our clients is to put them on equal footing with any other person charged, and in equal footing with the prosecution. And that's the idea. It's the state of Ohio versus the client. We represent them, we represent their interests, we're on a level playing field. And that sadly just does not provide that level playing field. With the consolidation over to the Court Street Office, we've been through the spaces, as Ancona and I have walked through those spaces, there's plenty of space there. We can have one lobby. We can have a lobby with a, I've met, I know the security guy down below, nice gentleman, who have you sign in, but it's very different. He is not a law enforcement officer. They come up to our lobby. The lobby in youth is a lot different than our lobby. We're working on this, but what we're working on is trying to make it more, less of a place you get processed, right? Less of a sort of an informal setting. Currently have paintings and different sort of artwork put up by some of our juvenile clients, some of our youth clients who've done work while they're sitting in 2020 or hanging in our office, to do more things like that and make it more of a space, a place where they could bring their kids. We can have staff watch their kids while they're meeting with the adults, right? And when I say with their adults, with their attorneys. So just to sum up very quickly, it's for the clients, it's for collaboration, and it's for confidentiality. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Am I having to have it upside down? All right. For the remainder of requests, we are asking for additional positions again. Most of these positions we are requesting are staff attorney positions, and we're asking them for several reasons, but two most importantly. First, being that in several of our divisions, we are just seeing more cases run through our office than in previous years. The increased caseload requires either our attorneys to increase their own individual caseloads or to become even more reliant on panel attorneys or assigned counsel to meet this increased demand. The second reason is, we, as in our management team and our Public Defender Commission, sincerely believe that a client receives a higher level of legal representation when receiving legal representation from a staff attorney from our office as opposed to a private panel attorney. There are several reasons for this. First, all of our attorneys when hired are required to go through a year-long intensive training program designed by our Training Director and our Municipal Division Director, Sean. This program inculcates, educates, and molds our new attorneys into a client-centric approach to legal representation our office has adopted. Each new attorney begins with a misdemeanor division for one year, where they learn, sharpen their legal skills, and are evaluated under the direction of the Training Director, the Division Directors, and our team leads. After one year, and if that attorney has exceeded the comprehensive training, education, and performance criteria, that employee is eligible to continue their legal careers in one of our other divisions. I want to make sure we all understand, though, that through their first year and every year after, each staff attorney is monitored, mentored, and evaluated by established attorneys from our office. Second, and related to this, our office has a wealth of resources that ensure that each staff attorney has access to all the necessary training tools and opportunities they need to maximize their professional potential as attorneys in Hamilton County. Training occurs both in-house and elsewhere, and is consistently offered to staff attorneys throughout the year. And each attorney training is tailored to meet their own needs and is closely monitored by the Training Director, Division Directors, and their team leads. Our goal is to ensure that each staff attorney is as well-rounded in all aspects of legal representation, from research and writing to courtroom decorum, strategy, and even effective communication both with our clients and their peers. We also believe in the value of representation. Our management team has taken tremendous strides to ensure that all the staff of our office looks like the rest of Hamilton County, as a large urban county in Ohio. Hamilton County is diverse. We have initiated intentional steps to ensure that our staff represents this diversity. We believe this matters and impacts the lawyer-client relationship positively, in that it provides both comfort to the client, knowing that their attorney is better positioned to understand and appreciate some of the circumstances that led to their needs of our services, as well provides an air of legitimacy to the legal system as a whole. In totality, our training program offers unmatched education, oversight, training, and evaluation of our staff, areas that we are unable to even measure, we're unable to even measure it among our private panel attorneys. For these reasons, we strongly believe that our clients are better suited by direct representation from our office as opposed to sending them with panel attorneys. Now, we are requesting a team of new felony attorneys, seven in total, for the reasons I mentioned just a few seconds ago, but also for lessoteric reasons. Since 2022, the number of indigent clients requiring legal representation in Hamilton County has increased 13% in the felony division. Thankfully and with your support, by approving additional felony staff members, we have been able to increase the number of cases handled in-house by our felony team substantially over that time. 66... over that time, 66%. However, as you can see, we still don't quite represent or represent on the majority of our clients who require felony legal protection. Instead, we represent closer to 34% on all felony indigent cases. Our goal, and one that is supported by our commission, we would like to get that percentage to be over 50%. That would require us to take nearly 1,700 more cases annually. The additional team of attorneys will increase our case capacity by approximately 700 cases per year. Yes, still below that 1,700 figure, but it puts us one step closer to our goal. The next slide is for an additional adult appellate attorney. Again, like felony before, we are seeing substantial increase in the number of cases requiring appellate legal work. Since 2020, the number has increased 31%. All the while, we've not added a single appellate attorney during that time. In addition, our appellate division handles over 90% of all indigent appellate criminal cases in Hamilton County, 90%. And one additional point of context, too, as the number of clients and cases increases for our office, so too does the number of clients requiring appellate representation once their initial case is resolved. There's a direct correlation here in the volume of work occurring in other divisions of our office and the increase in the volume of work required by our appellate team. Now, the next position we are requesting is a dedicated, oh, I'm sorry. Next, we are once again requesting additional staff for our Municipal Division. Let's begin our request with two new attorneys there, one municipal traffic attorney and one immigration attorney. Now, I think you would all agree that having reliable transportation is probably the most critical aspect of meaningful employment. Currently, the Municipal Division handles approximately 10,000 cases annually involving traffic offenses that carry jail sentences that range from 30 days to six months. And when a client is charged with a traffic violation, there are several severe implications on their ability to drive a vehicle and get to work, up to an indefinite license suspension, sometimes arbitrarily decided by the BMV for things like failure to present insurance during a traffic stop. These outcomes can be avoided. We believe by having a dedicated attorney, by having a dedicated attorney on staff who specializes in traffic law and who is assigned to fostering the kinds of relationships with organizations like the BMV and other statutory programs enacted by the Ohio Legislature that aim to reduce the fees and even offer amnesty to clients in certain cases. We are also requesting an immigration attorney. We are requesting this position as a result of a decision made by the U.S. Supreme Court, Padilla v. Kentucky, that rules that a criminal defense lawyer violates a non-citizen Sixth Amendment right by failing to advise the client of deportation ramifications following a guilty plea. What the implications here are, that a defense lawyer must, must now concern themselves with the broader legal effects of a criminal conviction for their non-citizen clients. We are requesting an attorney on staff who has a comprehensive knowledge of immigration law in order to ensure that we fulfill those Sixth Amendment federal obligations required of us by the United States Supreme Court. Also within our Municipal Division, we are requesting five additional trial attorneys. Now, why? Again, for both philosophical reasons mentioned previously and others more concrete. First, the Municipal Division is just handling more, is handling more cases in-house. If the figures from the first half of 2024 remain consistent, the Division will be assigned nearly 23,000 cases and nearly 16,000 clients. This amounts to a 10% increase in the, in total cases assigned to the Division and an 11% increase in the number of clients we represent just from 2023. This increase can be handled in one of two ways, either providing additional staff to the Division or by assigning those cases and clients to panel attorneys. And of course, for the reasons I've stated several times now, we believe those clients would be better represented by in-house staff attorneys. The second reason is related to the fact that the majority of police departments in Hamilton County are now employing both body-worn and vehicle cameras. As there is more utilization of this technology by them, this video is becoming a more significant part of the trial preparation process. Each piece of the video must be reviewed and analyzed in its entirety by our attorneys. This year, we issued a survey of our staff attorneys concerning their use, usage of camera footage. What we discovered was that our trial attorneys spent, on average, between one and three hours every day just reviewing this footage. We know the cost of our attorneys, and we can extrapolate that we are spending nearly $3,000 per day or $760,000 per year just reviewing camera footage. If approved, we hope that these additional positions could be used to help reduce our Division's caseload on a per-attorney basis and hopefully reduce the amount of time each attorney spends reviewing camera footage as their caseloads get reduced. We, in short, we just believe that there's more productive ways to use our attorneys' time and to compensate them than to pay them to review these camera footage.
Commissioner, I'll make it brief in this. Also, here's the other thing. When we watch body-worn camera, we can establish pretty quickly, is there a defense? Is there a motion issue? In other words, were rights violated? The problem we have is we're inundated with so much body-worn camera, we have to continue cases again and again and again. And every time we continue a case, it not only frustrates our client, it frustrates the courts, it frustrates the prosecutors, and it frustrates victims, right? Because we have to say, we have to say, Judge, we received 15 body-worn cameras and only made through three of them at this point, and you know, three weeks. And the judges almost always give it to us, right? But that's what it does. I think by moving, by allowing us frankly, getting more attorneys in-house so they can review that body-worn camera, it will save court appearances, it'll actually just move the court system that much more quickly, and I think it will save money because it'll be a lot fewer settings in court. That's all I wanted to say.
We are also requesting additional positions to our Youth Defense Division. Specifically, we are requesting one new youth trial attorney, one new youth defense appellate attorney, and one additional paralegal. Let's begin with the appellate attorney. The rationale for this position is similar to the rationale for our appellate division position I mentioned previously. We're simply just seeing more cases come through our Youth Defense Division, and there's a direct correlation between the raw number of cases and clients and the volume of cases requiring appellate work as they work through the court system. As you can see in this chart, the number of cases, case assignments in our Youth Defense Division are on track to increase this year by 64% since 2021. This reality, again, requires my office to make a strategic decision. Either we can add additional staff to our office to, or we can, or we can increase caseloads, both on the trial and appellate attorney levels, or increase reliance on panel attorneys. And I spoke about this previously again, but we believe residents of Hamilton County are better suited when they're represented in-house by on-staff panel attorneys, or Our next request is for an additional GAL investigator. Currently, we only have one to assist 16 staff attorney GALs and 10 non-attorney GALs. On a case-level basis, this Division's on track to handle over 7,000 cases and 11,000 clients this year. That's a ratio of one investigator for every 7,000 cases. Simultaneously to this, we are seeing an increase in demand for our investigator services. Should be not surprising. We, we track caseload assignments for our investigator, and since 2021, we've seen 238% increase in investigator closed cases. These requests can range from performing background check investigations, social media investigations, calls for service record reviews, police report reviews, medical record reviews, to even surveillance. We believe that we're at capacity in our current investigative capacity in our GAL Division. Tied to this is a safety consideration here as well, especially when it comes to onsite, in-home visits and surveillance. Two eyes is always better than one, and we want to make sure that our investigator is as safe and secure in these tough situations that we require his services. Now, our last request in regard to additional staff is in our Adult Social Services Division. Our Adult Social Services or Social Work Division is requesting one additional social worker and an additional admin. This Division's newer, is currently staffed by five dedicated social workers who each have a typical caseload of approximately 40 clients. I'd like to remind you that we represent 35,000 clients annually. What this means is that there's just simply times when we are at capacity and have to limit who we can assist, simply from a staffing capacity logistical reality. With that said, we have served 750 clients since this department's inception and can demonstrate a significant business case for adding additional social work staff. Our team's social workers have saved Hamilton County a considerable amount already. We know that, we know what the cost is on housing an inmate, or housing a client in the Justice Center. That's approximately $104 per night. We also know the number of days a client's jail sentence has been suspended because there is alternative treatment options tailored to the individual and logistically planned by our team of social workers. Absent this work, these clients would likely be serving their sentences in the Justice Center at a cost of $103.87 per night. In total, we believe our social worker, Social Work Division has saved Hamilton County $2.8 million since its inception. What we would like is to receive additional capacity so we can serve more clients and help save the county significant resources. Finally, we are asking once again for a salary increase for next year. That increase is to account for a cost of living adjustment based on inflationary pressures that I think we're also experiencing and to allow for a slight merit-based increase. That's our summary of the position requests. All staff salary, or I'm sorry, the total 2025 requested grand total is $2.5 million, of which 78% would be reimbursed to Hamilton County of approximately $2 million with a net general fund cost of $570,000 for next year. And at this time, I'm happy to answer myself, John, or Kathy, or happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks to all of you for being here. I have a couple of questions. The first one, of the 22 positions requested, how many total FTEs are there in the Public Defender's Office?
Yeah, we have 178 FTEs.
Okay. Gives an idea of percentage, like, 22 sounds like a lot, depending on how many employees you have.
Right. I have, I put together growth of our office since 2022. In 2022, we had 162 full-time FT, or FTEs. In 2023, 175, and this year, we have 178.
Okay. So you've been increasing as we go?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have, and you got to it here at the very end with this reimbursement amount, so have, have you engaged or are you aware of any conversations at the state level related to the reimbursement?
We get, I, we get monthly reimbursement updates by the Ohio Public Defender. I sit through those, Ray and Kathy joins in, sits through those. They are projecting 78% through next year. That's as of the last reimbursement meeting that I've attended, which is just last month.
So at the County Commissioners Association, we talk about this all the time. It's, I think it's our number one priority is to advocate to the legislature that we have a higher reimbursement for this. We were trying to get to 100% a couple of years ago, and it kind of ebbs and flows, and it really has a significant impact on our budget as it goes. So do you, so as county commissioners, we advocate to the delegation, we have delegation lunches every year, and all three of us say that this is a priority of ours to increase the reimbursement. Do you all have that same kind of, I don't want to call it lobbying, because it's more of a, in your case, making people aware of the impact of that lesser, lesser, lesser reimbursement for your budget? So how do you go about advocating with the elected officials on that issue?
Yeah, I think one thing from the administrative side that the Ohio Public Defender is doing is becoming more involved on the planning, budgetary planning. This year was the first year, we have a new Ohio Public Defender, Elizabeth Miller, who actually came from the Hamilton County Public Defender's Office several years ago. But this year, her and her team have requested from every county projected budgets, not only for 2025, but for 2026 as well. I think one of the challenges in terms of reimbursement, reimbursement, and on their budget side is they're operating in the dark. They've never actually requested any of the county public defender offices to submit to them their budget projections. So when they're going through their budget lobbying, and they have a buy-in on budget, they're clearly operating in the dark. This year, we submitted our budget. It's to my knowledge that every other county public defender office has as well. We've even submitted a forecast for 2026 to them. So hopefully that will help them reach their goal of 100% reimbursement. I don't know if Kathy has anything else to add to that?
No, this was the first year, and then they wanted us to report that.
Okay. So you see that as a good sign?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. They will know, they lobby themselves. I think, again, one of the challenges they had, they didn't really know how much to lobby for. They have the goal, they also want to reimburse counties as much as possible because they understand we're not unique, Hamilton County, in terms of these expenses for indigent defense. The more information they have, the better situated they are when it comes to outgetting resources from the Ohio Legislature for reimbursement to the counties. And like I said, this year's, the first year, at least since I've been here, that they've requested not only one year, but two years of budget information.
Okay. Yeah, just by way of a reminder, you know, this is something that is required by the state of us, with no funding, well, some funding attached. We're asking, hey, you know, you're asking us to do this in partnership, we would like you to cover the cost. That's basically where, where we're coming from. Commissioner Dumas, any questions?
Thank you for your presentations. I just have scribble all over, but certainly, what would we do without the 78% reimbursement? And we definitely would love to have 100%. And I'm thinking about the great things that the public defender does, and you talked about your staff's increase just minimally when you have a giant increase of clients that are needing you, so there are not enough lawyers, not enough money here or there. We've talked about a possible $45 million gap for, for next year. And I'm wondering about all these great lawyers doing paperwork and copying and all this stuff. I had, I'm looking at strategies. I know you looked at it before, but I want you guys to be able, of course, to deal with your clients, which you are, your caseload is, I'm just sitting there like, how can you do it? But you do it. And have you thought about maybe having interns, like legal interns from our great law school that we have here? You know, I know you, how many lawyers you want, but if we're not able to do it, so have you used legal interns?
Yes, we have. Perhaps Sean can jump in and talk a little bit more about this, but we just, we are focusing heavily, especially this year, and we started doing it a little bit last year on bringing interns in.
Prior to being the Municipal Director, I trained the lawyers. I was the Training Director at the office, and one of those duties as well was to actually be the professor at University of Cincinnati where I ramble, it's called the Indigent Defense Practicer, and where to have third-year law students come into our office and practice. And currently, we have 11. In fact, we just trained them over the last 10 days, through the weekend, frankly. They handle about 10 cases a piece. They handle about 10 cases a piece, right? So we currently have 11 law students who are going to practice the entire year under my supervision and Mr. Dunnington's supervision. Along with that, each and every department does have multiple interns, both college and law students. Over the summer, we usually average between 15 and 20 law students. With that, they provide some relief, but they also provide, we have to ethically show with them during all those important conversations. So it actually, at the same time, puts a little bit of extra work on us, which is fine. We accept that. We want to train the generation of lawyers. And then the third, actually, what it comes back to then also is space. We don't have space for them. Currently, in the slide you saw earlier was what we call Cube City, cubicles, and that's where they're all housed. In fact, they have to share cubes. We have so many social worker interns and public defender interns that everybody shares a space. So we're frankly, there is no space for any more interns.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I just, just, I'm sitting here almost like overwhelmed with the job that you guys have to do and what you do, and just humbled by what public defenders do and trying to figure out how to reduce the burnout and then also trying to figure out, we're committed to doing all that we can do. But of course, you know, it's limited, but do you get other, any other funding, like do you write grants or anything?
We do. Our youth defense division, Angela Chang's very active in the federal grant world. We currently have a grant of approximately $500,000. We're in year three of that, but the grant was for $500,000. Our social work director, she submitted for a federal grant and a state of Ohio grant, hopefully to fund additional positions if it would get approved. We are increasingly becoming active in the grant world.
All right. Thank you so much. That's all. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our budget presentations for today. We have one more item. It's the CDBG nonprofit grant recommendation, and Maria Collins is here from the Community Development Department to give us an update here.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice President Drehouse, Commissioner Summer Dumis. We're here today to present the 2024 Nonprofit Services CDAC recommendations. Those recommendations will be presented to you all today by Senior Program Manager Katie Valli.
Okay.
Maria, and good afternoon, commissioners. As Maria mentioned, my name is Katie Valli. I am a senior program manager in the Community Development Division, and today I am presenting the 2024 CDBG nonprofit services funding recommendations. Our competitive RFP process for CDBG nonprofit services started in 2018. Every program year HUD sets a public services cap of 15% from our annual CDBG allocation. For our 2024 programmatic year, the Community Development Division allocated $455,000 for public services via our nonprofit services RFP. Each project must meet a national objective as required by CDBG funding. The three national objectives are benefiting low to moderate income individuals or households, preventing or eliminating slum or blight, and meeting an urgent need such as natural disaster response. Typically, our nonprofit services applicants will meet a national objective by benefiting low to moderate income individuals or households. To be eligible for this funding, the applicant must provide either a new service or a quantifiable increase in the level of an existing service that received funding from this RFP within the past year. If a project has previously received nonprofit services funding, CDBG funds can provide continued funding at the same or decreased level. And as a general rule of thumb, CDBG funds can't replace state or local funding sources. In May of 2024, the nonprofit services RFP was released. Proposals were due in June of 2024 and were accepted for a variety of public services, as you can see here, including services such as healthcare, workforce development, food access, legal services, and more. In June and July of 2024, the Community Development Advisory Committee, known as CDAC, met to evaluate the submitted applications. The 2024 RFP scoring criteria included factors such as leverage of other funds, which is based on other dollars raised, sustainability of services based on stakeholder collaboration and composition of the board of directors or people served, geographic area served based on how many high-poverty local governments are served, agency impact based on capacity building status and strategic alignment with the organization's mission. The final scoring element was CDAC's discretionary points, which considered several factors such as community impact, program uniqueness, innovation, scalability, equity, demonstrated need, and prior performance with awarded grants. As noted in the 2023 recommendation presentation made last year, we received a significant increase in the number of nonprofit services funding requests compared to 2022. This was due to expanded outreach via one-on-one engagements, group meetings, word of mouth, and more public notifications. It was also due to a change in the focus of eligible uses from COVID-related needs to more general public needs. And it was also due to a reduction in the minimum award threshold from $50,000 to $10,000, which allowed smaller awards to be given. Our 2024 funding cycle has experienced sustained engagement from interested nonprofits as the number of submitted applications is double that from our 2022 programmatic year. Overall, we received 21 applications from 19 unique organizations. Several organizations applied for less than $50,000, and of the 19 organizations that submitted proposals, about one-third of those were first-time applicants. Of the 21 applications received this year, 18 applications were deemed eligible from 16 unique organizations. CDAC's funding recommendations include eight awards to eight organizations. This would allocate awards to half of all eligible organizations and fund one-third of the total amount requested from the 18 eligible proposals. As outlined here, Immigrant and Refugee Law Center received an average score of 96 for their immigration legal services program with a recommended award amount of 100,000. St. Vincent de Paul received an average score of 93 for their charitable pharmacy program with a recommended award amount of 60,000. This amount is based on their 2023 nonprofit services award amount of the same amount as CDBG public service funds are limited to providing continued support at the same or decreased level. Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati received an average score of 90 for their Safe and Stable Program with a recommended award amount of 67,000. Legal Aid also received funding in 2023 for this project, and this year's funding recommendations provides continued support at the same level. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati received an average score of 89 for their construction training program with a recommended award amount of 50,000. Valley Interfaith Community Resource Center received an average score of 88 for their food pantry services program with a recommended award amount of 68,000. Cincy Smiles Foundation received an average score of 87 for their maternal and early childhood oral health care program with a recommended award amount of 25,000. Free Store Food Bank received an average score of 86 for their workforce development opportunities programs with a recommended award amount of 50,000. And ICron Corporation received an average score of 80 for their Achieving Self-Sufficiency Through Employment Training and Support Program with a recommended award amount of 35,000 for a total recommended award amount of $455,000. CDAC's funding recommendations can be visualized here via this chart, with 15% going toward food access, 22% toward immigrant legal services, 29% toward workforce development, 19% toward pharmacy and health care, and 15% toward eviction and foreclosure legal services. This table includes proposal applications that were ultimately not recommended for funding by CDAC. For the final three entities listed here, Tacoon Farm, Peachtree Advocacy, and New Life Furniture Bank, CDAC passed a motion to remove them from consideration due to incomplete budget documentation. Tacoon Farm and Peachtree Advocacy's applications were deemed ineligible as their budgets didn't adequately demonstrate how the requested CDBG funding would be used. New Life Furniture Bank's application was deemed ineligible as their budget didn't demonstrate a funding gap. Given both New Life Furniture Bank and Peachtree Advocacy's programmatic focus on supporting those at risk of or overcoming homelessness, they will both be referred to our upcoming RFP for home ARP funding, which we anticipate being introduced later this year. The Community Development Division will also provide technical assistance to interested entities in the fall later this year for applicants that were not funded to discuss how applications can be improved for next year's RFP. And at this time, no legislative action is necessary by the board. However, contracts with each awarded agency will require board action once terms are accepted. Thank you again for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation for both of you. Appreciate the information. I thought the graph, the pie chart, is especially helpful for us to figure out what, you know, what we're looking at here and what the impact will be related to these needs in the community. So I thank you for that. And I also thank you for providing the information related to the scoring and the requests, both for those who are getting funding and for those who are not. It helps to round out the picture for us, so I appreciate the information. I don't have any questions. Commissioner Dumis, do you have any questions?
No questions but comments. Thank you both for your presentation. I'm just elated. How can I say that? And the reason why is because planning took back everything that we talked about. I have no questions to ask because we wanted, I wanted more transparency, who got the grant, who didn't. It's significant that in 2022, there was an increase in applications. We talked about how we were not letting enough people know. I appreciate the smaller entities. I appreciate that a lot of these applications were first time, we're doing what we need to do. I appreciate the diversity of agents, agencies that we're giving this money to. I love the pie chart. And so just the whole, the TA that's being given to the applicants, I'm just in heaven right now. I think that this was just presented, Maria, so, so well, and Katie. Right, okay. I'm just so happy because we asked, it was, it was a learning curve, and so you guys have gotten there, and I certainly appreciate. And when you talk about, you know, as Commissioner Drehouse was saying, why they didn't get it and what you guys are going to do to help them, and this is what it's all about. And so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, Administrator Lutos, or anything else in front of us? All right, Commissioner, I'm about to adjourn the meeting.
I'm good. I said, doesn't take much to make me happy, does it?
No, well, it's true, though. You, you can see it reflected in the report.
Yes, absolutely.
So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.